February 7th. Appreciate your attendance. See, we've got a big crowd today and each of you will have an opportunity to be heard in just a few minutes on the subject matter that you came here to discuss today. I'll call the meeting to order and I'll ask my peers, have you had a chance to look at the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Each of you, I think, have received the minutes of our January 31st meeting electronically. Have you had a chance to review those? And are there any comments? Did I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Kessel. Motion by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing related to zoning map amendment in the Buckeye Cove area. Debbie, I guess on behalf of staff, would you please give us your report?
Joyce Austin has applied for a rezoning of 545 Buckeye Cove Road, pin number 9688139696, and lot number 8307. Angela Allen has applied for 7 Delray Lane, pin number 9688038776, and lot 8625. Eula Riddle has applied for rezoning of 11 Delray Lane, 9688037837. Eddie Bryant has applied for a rezoning of 645 Buckeye Cove Road, pin lot number 9688035680. And Tanya Ellis has applied for 5 Delray Lane, 9685036731. They have all applied for rezoning from R1 to R3 residential districts, and it's a total of seven lots and 9.45 acres. Properties are located on the north side of Buckeye Cove Road, east of its intersection with Delray Lane. The properties currently contain a variety of uses, including mobile homes, single-family homes, modulars, farm buildings, and agricultural uses. Although the surrounding area is zoned R1 and RLD, a mix of uses, which include double-wide and single-wide mobile homes are there. Given the number of owners making the request and the number of adjacent properties involved, the requested zoning would be consistent with surrounding uses in the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, as the land use plan update indicates that R3 is suitable for higher-density uses and mobile homes. The proposed R3 zoning would be consistent with the surrounding area, which already contains mobile homes. The requested zoning would not be detrimental to the owner, adjacent neighbors, and surrounding community, and the Buncombe County Planning Department recommends approval of the request. You have received letters electronically from 10 properties, and then two additional letters this morning. Those letters were against the proposed rezoning. And as you generally like to ask people who are making comment at public hearings where their property is located, I did map out where those properties are. And also, I wanted to make you aware that rather than sending notices to adjoining property owners, we do send them within 1,000 feet of properties now. And the maps that Jillian's going to be bringing are those maps. The letters that you received are from the properties that are outlined in blue, and the proposed rezoning properties are outlined in red.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. We got, we just had three, three map, I mean, three copies?
Yes, I'm sorry to, if you can share.
Okay, that's okay. Go ahead and pass that down, and I want to give Joe and Rod an opportunity to look at that just a second before we hear from the applicant and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here on behalf of the applicant that would like to speak? On behalf of the applicant, Ms. Austin? Oh, not necessarily Ms. Austin, but is there someone representing you or?
I'm not.
Okay, that's fine. If you would like to speak, please come forward and state your name and spell your name as well, and I'm sorry for, yeah, right there. And check and see, tap that mic and see if that mic's on. Yeah, thank you very much. If you don't mind, I mean, I can spell it, but for the record, please spell your last name.
Okay.
Sometimes we've got some folks up here, we don't know how to spell their last name, we need to get it on record.
Austin, A-U-S-T-I-N. First name Joyce, J-O-Y-C-E.
Okay, thank you very much. Would you like to speak to us about your application and the merits thereof?
The reason that I'm here is my neighbor wanted, she wants to put her son a trailer on her property, which is across from ours, across the creek from ours. And I don't care if they put a trailer over there, it's their property. We are currently, we don't want to put trailers on our property, we have no plans to do so. But at the same time, I think in the future, if we wanted to or needed to, I think we should be able to. I mean, it's our property. I feel that not everybody can afford to build houses, and especially the economy the way it is. But that's the main purpose that I'm here, is my neighbor approached me, and they want to do that for their son, and I have no objections to that at all. I think they should be able to, to help their children, I mean, the only way they can.
Okay. Anything, Mr. Austin?
Yes, I guess I'd like to rest everybody's minds, I've had several phone calls since I own several lots in the, in the community, that I've heard everything, that I'm planning on putting low-income housing on this piece of property. I have no plans to put anything other than the cattle I have on this property now. I guess I don't know why I need to be rezoned for the neighbor to put a trailer on their property, but if that's what it takes for the young man to get one, I don't have a problem with it either way, whether I am or where I'm not. But I have no plans to put low-income housing or a trailer park on the adjoining property town, just to rest the neighbor's minds, because I've had calls from the neighbors, "What are you building over here?" You know, "I'm not building anything."
Okay.
So that's all I've got to say about it.
Does anybody on the board have anything to ask of the Austins while we've got them here at this point in time? You got anything, Joe, or any questions?
Not yet.
I tell you what we're going to do, though, after we get through with the Austins, we're going to start the public comment period, and you'll have an opportunity then to speak for three minutes per person, okay?
Or, Mr. Chairman, you might want to allow the other four applicants as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, the person that put in for it, Angie, she probably needs to.
Okay.
They're the ones that the trailer's going to be for.
Okay. Okay, Angela Allen? Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
You'll have to see it.
You do, you do, if you don't mind, just for a minute. And again, please, I mean, I can spell it, but please state your name and spell your last name, please, ma'am.
I'm Angela Allen, I go by Angie, and it's A-N-G-E-L-A-A-L-L-E-N.
Thank you very much.
And I would like to say that one of the applicants on here passed away yesterday, so she will not be, and her family will not be here.
And who would that be?
Eula Riddle.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Like Ross and Joyce said, this basically what happened was, this family's been passed down through our, from my grandmother, and to my dad, and then he passed it to me and my sister, who, she's Tanya Ellis, and she's at work. Basically, all we wanted to do was put, we have two plots of land, we have a big piece and then a small piece, but it's all ours one together, we use it all, it's not, you know, separated in any way, shape, or form other than by a line. We came over here to get the application and permit to put a small, single-wide trailer in for my son. As you know, he works at Wright's Machine Shop, and the economy's low, and we were just trying to help him out. And everything else meets the specs, as far as measurements from the creek, and he's going to share a well, blah, blah, blah. Found out we couldn't do it because we'd been rezoned. We were not aware, as when I approached these other people and talked to people, we had not been made aware that we were rezoned, because we just basically don't, you know, I guess it's our fault, we don't pay attention to that stuff. We just keep to ourselves. And inside the circle of Buckeye Cove and Christian Creek there, it is mixed. There's single wides and double wides and modulars, and, you know, one of the purposes of us moving from out of the town of Black Mountain back into Swananoa, which is where my, I said my dad's from, was to give our kids a better life, and live in the country and have the good life. And like Ross said, he's got Texas Longhorns beside us. That's good for kids to be around rather than other things. So, you know, and our hopes were 10 years ago, when we put our modular down there, was to be able to help our kids out. There's no hidden agenda, there's no anything to it other than what I'm saying. And I had, it made me feel awkward to have to go approach my neighbors and tell them, initially, that there's a $200 application fee per property owner to have their property rezoned, okay? They didn't care to have theirs rezoned because they weren't aware of the changes, and they didn't have a need to do this. But we did. And, you know, as you know, when you grow, when you get older, your kids take care of you and help do things for you, and that's our mindset, that's how we think. That's the only purpose to this. But when we, I had to go and ask them to help us do this, I was like, oh, no. I told the lady that I spoke with about all this, I said, "They're not going to pay $200 to help us." And why should they? You know, I mean, most of us on here can't, couldn't afford the $200, so they weighed the application fee for us. And so here we are, you know, I mean, that's, no hidden agendas, no trailer parks, no anything, and, I mean, it's keeping Buckeye with what Buckeye is, it's farming, small farming community, where everybody looks out for everybody. You know, I mean, and there's people that aren't on here, and I know it's, it doesn't matter, that have told me that, like Joyce and Ross said, that's our property, we should be able to do what we want to with it. Well, until we got zoned in Buckeye Cove, I mean, there's nothing wrong with it. Nobody's done any, there's no trailer parks or apartment complexes. And it is what it is, my family's been there 62 years. They're one of the first 25 people that started the Cove. I'm just asking to be allowed to put a small, single-wide trailer for my son to start his own life.
Okay, let me ask you something, if you don't mind helping me just a little bit. You may have to step around here if you don't mind. Which one of these tracks is your track? That's okay.
Okay.
I am due.
This is Buckeye, I'm assuming, right here, and that's Delray.
Yeah, and that's the Austin property, right there.
Yeah, this is my dad's, this is my sister's, that's her road. This is my two pieces right here.
These two right here?
Mm-hmm.
That and that?
But we use it as one.
I got you. But those two by definition, boundary?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right there in my little carport.
Where were you going to put the trailer?
Mr. Chairman, can you tell us which two she marked? Do they have the parcel numbers, the last full digit?
I may have to bring it over there to you, yeah.
Is it this one right, it's these two right here, right?
No.
It's the triangle-shaped, this one and this one? And then the tripod?
Can I use yours?
Yeah, please, please, and I'll talk to you.
It's these two.
Okay.
This is our driveway.
I will, I'll do that.
This is Delray Lane, this is the Riddle's property.
And you were going to put?
We're going to put it right here. We already have a three-wall shed where we keep our lawnmowers, the four-wheelers, chicken feed, everything else we need, and that's going to have to go, and we're going to put a trailer up there.
Okay, thank you.
It's not going to stick it out in the middle of the yard, we don't have anywhere to put it, because our drain field lines are all right through here, so we have nowhere else to put it.
Pass that down to Jillian, thank you.
To Jillian?
Pass that down to Jillian, please. That'll be it, unless you have anything else.
No, thank you.
Okay, on behalf of applicant Eddie Bryant, is there anyone here? Okay.
Should we ask you one anyway?
Again, please state your name and spell your last name, sir, please. Please state your name and spell your last name, please.
Eddie Bryant.
Eddie Bryant.
B-R-Y-A-N-T.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I just, it's my daughter, and I lived there for 60 years, a little over 60 years in Buckeye, and I don't know how it got zoned the way it is, but I've seen a lot of people move in there and everything else, and the original people that grew up there, you know, we had to just make do with what we did, and how we could live and everything. And I just don't see that people can come in and tell you what you can do with your own land and what you can't do. And I don't, there are no trailer parks or anything like that, it's just a place to live instead of people being homeless. I've seen a lot of that, so, I've seen a lot of veterans homeless. So if they could just, you know, even have a small home, it'd be better than nothing.
Okay, anything else? Any questions for Mr. Bryant? Okay, unless you have anything else.
Appreciate you talking.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay, I think now, Mr. Frew, we've heard from all the applicants that are present today.
Tanya Ellis? She's working.
She is working. Ms. Allen stated in, when she got up, that she's working, that couldn't be here today, and unfortunately, as we heard, Ms. Riddle's passed away. So, okay, on behalf of others that would like to speak to this matter, if you would, come up one at a time. You'll have three minutes, I've got a timer up here, so let's try to hold it to three minutes or less, if you don't mind. Identify yourself by name, please spell your last name, and tell us where you're from.
I live in Buckeye Cove, my name's Iris, I-R-I-S, Sluder, S-L-U-D-E-R. We're not opposed to people having a place to live, because like Mr. Bryant said, they need a place to live. When the county enacted countywide zoning, but that essentially wiped people out from having a mobile home on their own property where their children could live. You know, the children didn't have to buy additional land, but what we're concerned about is, and I have several questions, can the, like, this lady just needs a mobile home on her property, but as I understand it from the countywide zoning that was enacted, she can't do that just on her property, it has to be on, does it have to be on quite a bit of other property there? Because they're asking for 9.45 acres. Who wants to answer that question?
I'm going to answer it, and I'm going to let Mr. Frew, well, maybe Mr. Frew better answer it. I think I know the answer, but if you don't mind answering that, Mike.
Yeah, well, Debbie might have the facts specific to the case, but you don't want, you want to avoid a situation where it might be construed as spot zoning.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I understood before, if my memory was correct, that we couldn't have a spot zoning.
Right.
So how much property do people have to gather together so that one person can have a mobile home?
I don't think there's any line drawn in the sand, I wouldn't think. I mean, it's more subjective, and I know that's probably not the answer you want to hear.
Well, we can't get good answers in life.
Well, I wanted to contribute my, make my contribution to that as well, but I think that's the truth, I think it's subjective, you know, and, but I understand your question.
Yeah, because we are, I'm going to speak for myself, and I'm sure for numerous other people in Buckeye, we are good-carrying people, and we would like for people to have the best quality of life that they could have, but that's not possible, because we all know that people are living in horrendous conditions and can't better them. And it would be good, we should have gotten this beforehand, to have a list of what all that, I know I'm supposed to be up here just for three minutes, but anyway, as I understand it, you can't have a single, she asked for a single-wide mobile home? As I understand, you can't have that since the countywide ordinance was enacted.
You can in R3, you cannot in R1, which is what it's currently zoned, or R2.
How much time do I have left here?
You've got about 30 seconds.
All right, well, let me, let me wrap it up to say this.
Okay.
We are opposed to this, quite a few of us here in Buckeye Cove, because this would really slam the property values of all the rest of us. And, and, and the roads are very narrow, Buckeye Cove Road is very narrow, and anytime, and, and we can't be sure, that's what's frightening to the rest of us, that there won't be a mobile home park or apartment buildings put in there.
Correct.
So.
Okay, thank you very much. Next.
My name is Dave Mahon, I'm in your records, Charles D. My last name is spelled M-C-M-A-H-O-N. My property is approximately 150, 200 feet southwest of the Sead Track, and I live on property that's been in the family for some 140 years, so. But the planning board in the county put together a very comprehensive zoning plan, which was basically separated things out so that like items were together, and it's a good, workable plan. But then we have this request before you to rezone part of it into R3. This particular area does have mobile homes, but it is served by a very narrow, curvy, private drive, which raises some questions about the Buncombe County ordinances on roads and access. However, I understand, and I'm a real estate broker, so I am familiar with the problems with spot zoning, and I can see where the additional tracks involved in this is, keeps it from being spot zoning. But one thing I don't understand is that I can understand there were some problems with a environmental septic permit with the Ms. Allen, but she was waived the 200 application fee, but I don't understand why the other property owners were waived for the $200 application fee. As a real estate broker, I've inquired about two tracks adjacent to each other applying for rezoning, and I was told unequivocally that both tracks had to pay the $200 fee, even though they were right side by side. But referring to the spot zoning, this is not, it's a larger track, but to me, it's still spot zoning, it's just a larger track. If you drop a drop of ink or something on a paper towel, it doesn't stay one size, it spreads. And that's my point, if you approve this rezoning, then you've set an, you've set a precedence. What are you going to do, and there's a lot of vacant property around this area, but what are you going to do when the next people request a rezoning? If you approve this one, you've just set the precedence, then you're going to have to approve the second one, and the third one, and the fourth one. So all of a sudden, this small one spot, and I have no problem with Ms. Allen putting a mobile home on one track at all, but this rezoning can just keep growing and growing, and all of a sudden, it's a huge area and not just a small spot. And one final comment, if just this one, if Ms. Allen just wanted to put a mobile home on her property that was already zoned R1, why did she not just buy an on-frame modular, which is basically slightly, almost the same price as a mobile home? Because modular homes are allowed in R1, and they wouldn't have to go through all of this process. She could still put basically a mobile home on her property by just going to an on-frame modular.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Thank you very much. Got to get you fixed, eh?
Debbie, one clarification. The map that we were sent out shows R3 or RLD, if you go down Christian Creek Road there past the Y, is that RLD or is that R3?
RLD.
200 yards from this property, I am RLD, but it's basically a 50-inch track, and they can't fix only, only half of that property that's shown as RLD is really RLD, and that's what's up on the map. The lower part of it would be R1 if it was two tracks.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I'm Roger Wasson, that's R-RO-D-G-E-R-W-A-S-S-O-N, and I live on, at 119 Domino Drive, which is immediately in front of this property. My concern is nine and a half acres for one mobile home, and why the Austins joined in this when they're across the creek, or at least their home in the, the map that we had showed their home being in the rezoning request. I assume that Angela Allen's family, Eddie Bryant was her daddy, Tanya Ellis her sister, and I don't know about Mia Riddle, whether she was a family member or not, but it just appears to me that it's not necessary to rezone nine and a half acres when I don't know what her lot size is. But if it's big enough to put a mobile home on, then it should be big enough to be rezoned to allow the son to put a mobile home there, which I have no objection to. I can't see that property from my house, but what concerns me is the nine, probably nine acres that has nothing to do with her property, that's asked to be rezoned for no purpose, as I see it. There's no reason for that rezoning. The only one that has a reason to rezone is Angela Allen, and that, I, you know, like that to be clarified. There are over 350 families already in Buckeye Cove, with one way in and one way out, and as has been described as a hilly, curvy, dangerous, two-lane road, narrow. And we have lots of people that come through there, the speed limit's 35, and they think it's 85. So it's a very serious problem when we start having already-zoned property to allow multiple family units, mobile home parks, and this sort of thing. So that's my complaint.
Okay.
I have no objection to her having a mobile home on her property, but I don't see any sense in nine and a half acres for one, probably a half acre or two even. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your comments.
My name is DeeDee Stiles, S-T-Y-L-E-S. And as you know, I've been before you before, and when you, when we had the original zoning, you amended it to allow trailers in mobile homes, at least in R2, but with lots of qualifications. And the problem is that a lot of the people, especially out in Buckeye Cove and Lidle Cove where I live, are people who a mobile home is the only home they can afford. And by restricting having mobile homes in so many areas, you're cutting people out of being able to have their own home. I would encourage you, I mean, maybe a solution to this, rather than rezoning all that property R3, maybe make some new category where people could request special permission to place a mobile home on a R2 or a R1 property without rezoning the property, without spot zoning, but under some certain conditions, allow them to put a trailer in that area, or as you had did the first time the zoning went in, amend it again to allow people to have mobile homes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stiles. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Donna Oliver, D-O-N-N-A-O-L-I-V-E-R, and I live on Christian Creek Road, and my first comment that I would like to make is I received a letter. Creek Road, and my first comment that I would like to make is I received a letter, and I knew it was something to do with zoning. I didn't know what R1 and R3 were about, and I wished that in communications with property owners that maybe you would include some information about where we even get started to learn about what the issue is. And so I came today just to learn what the issue was, and I've heard both sides. I think I agree with many of the speakers that I think if you want to put up a home on your piece of property for a mobile home, that's fine with me. I do not understand as well why all the other property owners had to be included, and I do not understand why they don't have to pay the $200 fee. I don't really know what's true because I haven't heard anybody say, well, that's true. That's not true about the zoning and the spot zoning. I'm not even really sure what that term is. So that would be nice information to have when you send letters out to taxpayers about, well, what these are, so when people use these words, you know what they're talking about. So I guess I would like to encourage more information, so when we come to the meetings, we can be more informed. And I, I am also concerned about a precedent being set in the cove. If you allow one, one area and then another area and then another area, well, what's the purpose of the county zoning plan then? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else?
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm Laurie McDonald. I live up the hill from Domino Drive. It's 686 Christian Creek Road, and I guess I just agree with my neighbors who recently spoke that it opens the door up to things that we haven't had before. When, if the zoning has changed R1 to R3, then there's the possibility of multiple family housing right there, you know, in the middle of the cove. And I think, I can just see a developer coming in and offering them good money to build apartments or trailer parks in a substantial lot size like that. Nine acres is pretty big when you can fit 12 mobile homes or something on one acre. So that's what I'm worried about.
Okay, thank you very much. Or is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak regarding?
If it's possible, maybe I have a few more questions.
No, ma'am. Okay, I'm sorry. No, sir. I don't think so. Is that correct, Mike? Procedurally, you can-
That's fine. That would be within your discretion, but everybody's had one opportunity. It's the way you normally proceed.
Yeah.
Unless the board has any particular questions.
You come on, come on up, come on up, please. You're going, you're going to hear some discussion from the board once we close the public hearing session. You'll hear us discuss these things, and I'm sure, I think I know what you're looking for. I think you'll hear us comment on those comments that were made to us during the public hearing process. Is that what you're looking for? Okay, thank you.
And if we don't, we should probably allow them to ask if during our discussion we don't clarify their questions.
Right. Yes, yeah.
I think the big question is here since I own the majority of the property around this, I have no problem with leaving mine like it is for them to be in progress. That's not what I'm here for. I'm here to support this young man's right to own it. If the community is so concerned and I'm going to belt this piece of property that I own, you can leave mine to somebody that is because if I was going to rezonate, that might rule people louder and easier.
All right.
Building, trailer, trailer park, anything. We don't want that.
Okay.
But we're here to help our neighbors.
Well, let's, let's get this meeting back in order, and that's, that was the purpose of the public hearing piece, is to let everyone have an equal opportunity and so forth. We could get into this and be here till noon. None of us want that, I don't believe. From the board, well, first of all, do we have any other public comment? If not, the public hearing portion of this process is hereby closed. Okay, board.
Debbie, as far as our opportunity for any kind of rezoning that would allow the mobile home short of R3, there are no options.
RLD also allows mobile homes, but it also is a one-acre minimum lot size, which-
Can't qualify.
I'm not sure how many of these would qualify. Some of them would, some of them wouldn't.
Would that be for a single-wide mobile home, though, or would it have to follow?
Yes.
RLD would allow for that?
Mm-hmm.
But it has a caveat of a one-acre lot size minimum. That's what I heard. Is that correct? Okay. I heard a comment or two in the public hearing process that led me to believe that this property might have been zoned R3 at one time. Is that true?
In the first.
The first go-around, and maybe it was?
I'm not sure.
Apparently that's not, from the public, apparently that's not true. I was under the impression by, I can't recall.
I don't believe so. I think Ms. Stiles alluded to first go-around of zoning. The ordinance was amended to allow mobile homes up to certain standards in all districts, but that's not the same thing.
Okay.
And that's, you know, as, as the board knows, I have often spoken to that problem with our zoning ordinance because the prior zoning did allow for mobile home units in R1 and R2, if I remember correctly, and when it was changed, that was taken out. And I have constantly said to this board that affordable housing in this county is a problem, and that those particular areas in this, in this county, it's not unheard of to have mobile homes in, mixed in with homes, family homes, modular homes, and that kind of thing. And if we're going to limit those structures, then we're going to have to face issues like this where people have to, no choice but to go for a higher, more dense zoning in order just to have a home that they can afford to buy and live in in this county. And, and I still think and stress to this board that we need to relook at that and think about. I understand that we had to back off of that because of some other issues overlaying throughout the county, but we need to look at that again. We are going to face this in many, many areas, and it's, you know, to open up properties to most, a lot of uses, to allow someone to buy an affordable home on their property, it just seems like it's a contradiction. So I want to say one more thing. If the, a property here that we're looking at wanted to put a mobile home park on, would I be incorrect in thinking they would have to come through a conditional use process to do so?
In R3, they would.
In R3? And if they wanted to put a multifamily building development, more than one building, they would have to come through, that wouldn't be allowed in R3.
More than five units as well would have to come for a conditional use permit.
So more than one building or more than five units would have, well, that wouldn't be allowed. Is that right?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
I'm sorry. Let me, I didn't state that correctly. As I read it, it is multifamily resident, dwelling units, only one building is permitted under R3.
In the conditional use definition, it also stipulates more than five units.
Okay, okay. So those concerns that we heard today, I just wanted to talk about that. Those seem to be the two that were. Now, as far as traffic, anyone could put one home on any of those lots right now that would add traffic to the roads? I mean, within the allowable kinds of buildings? I mean, that would allow for the current zoning?
Any new development, whether it's a mobile or a site built, would add traffic.
And possibly any-
And would require a DOT permit.
An individual home does not require driveway permit.
But multifamily would.
Multifamily would.
Right.
And a large parcel could apply if they followed the standards of the county to split the property to make multiple homes, if it was a large parcel, for instance.
If it was a large parcel, if they subdivided, they would go through subdivision.
Under the current zoning that we have now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The way it's zoned now, I should say. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Michelle, just for those that were opposed to this, if you don't mind, if they may have a question about this, clean that up just a little bit. What you're saying, what you're trying to lay out here, I think, is that in the event someone wanted to move forward with a mobile home park or a apartment complex or this type of thing, they would have to go through the conditional use process. Is that what you're saying?
That's how I read it. There is a chapter 46, manufactured home and trailers. Is that right? There's a procedure set up for anyone who wants to put a mobile home park now.
Yes.
And they would have to follow all of the rules and regulations to that particular chapter in order to ask permission from the planning board to move forward.
They would have to apply to put in a mobile home park and abide by those regulations as well, which is 10,000 square feet per home if it's on a septic system rather than on public sewer, as well as apply for a conditional use permit with the Board of Adjustment.
Is that helpful?
Yeah, thanks. I hope it is for you all. It's kind of a checks and balance system that's beyond, in the event this were to be approved today, if someone were to bring forward a plan to go with a mobile home park, it would require additional consideration and approval by the planning board. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I think certainly Michelle's point is you got to look at more than the request for one's particular mobile home. Right or wrong with the current ordinance, you have to look at what other uses would be allowed if, if you go forward and the commissions approve the rezoning to R3 for all parcels involved.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to elaborate on what Michael just said. For the benefit of those here who might not know, the board has to consider the full impact of the zoning. And if you go into these charts that are in the zoning code and look in what we call the permitted use charts, and look under the column for R3, should this be approved R3, there is the possibility, while we've been focusing on a mobile home here for this discussion this morning, the board has to consider what's going to happen years on out when some of you may not even own the land that you're requesting to have the zoning changed for. And so if you look at the chart, what it says is that under conditional use conditions, that is, the applicant would come forward, and there would be a great deal of discussion, and the, and the approval is not automatic. It has, there's some subjectivity involved, and the end result is that in addition to mobile homes in the R3 area, you could have kennels, landing strips, recreation facilities such as bowling alleys, skating rinks, country clubs. You could have private and public nonprofit areas like parks and playgrounds. There could be public utility stations, schools, of course, and then travel trailers, travel trailer parks. And you could also have nurseries, day nurseries, and hospitals, nursing homes, things of that nature. It's not just mobile homes that we're talking about, and the board needs to consider this as we listen to your discussion. Thank you, Mrs. Chair.
I'll tail on that, that a lot of those uses that you, that you just listed are conditional. That means they would have to come back here again. So it's not like it's an automatic thing on some of the uses and many of the uses that you just said. So it's really the same conversation. A lot of things are allowed, and he has listed quite a few, but that does come back to the board with an application that's reviewed by us, and, and at that point, if there was another use, applicant who wanted another use, the public would have a chance to voice, okay, now, this particular is not good for our neighborhood and why. There would be a whole nother public meeting. Sorry.
Thank you. Greg, did you have something?
I did. I just, I understand the concerns of the neighbors. I think something that would give me some rest about this is certainly rules can change, but one thing that can't change is where your property is physically located in proximity to public utilities. And I think the, the concerns you have about some monster apartment complex or some high-density mobile home park without public utilities there, which I don't think any of us, this will happen in our lifetime, it just physically can't happen. I mean, it, it just physically can't happen. I've, I've done it. I've tried to do it. I've seen what works and what doesn't, and you just can't simply build a septic system and a water supply for the kind of density that I think you have concerns about. And like I said, I don't know that that may, may give you some peace, but I can just tell you, it physically can't be done.
Thank you, Greg. Does anyone else have a burning?
You know, the other thing to keep in mind is this property's been zoned for a little over a year, not counting the first go-around with zoning, so probably less than two years. And so people have been living up there for over 100 years. You know, developers haven't been coming in three, four, five years ago swooping in to buy this land to put trailer parks because of that utility problem. Without public water and public sewer, you're just not going to see high-density, you know, high-density development. So I don't, you know, I understand where a lot of people are coming from with their concerns, but I really kind of, you know, I don't know if it's, if it's been thought out, you know, enough to, well, certainly not enough to sway my vote because I don't, I don't really see where this is going to be a future problem with, you know, the potential for a future problem with putting up an apartment complex or even a trailer park because of that, the septic system problem.
Thank you, Bernie. Rod, did you have anything? Josh?
I wanted to, if staff would mind sharing some information about spot zoning with those in attendance and why it might have been required for multiple parcel owners to put in an application.
I wish there was another way to skin this cat so we could just approve the one request somehow, conditionally or otherwise, and not do it for a whole area.
I'm sorry, Joe. I didn't.
Well, go ahead, Mike.
Just looking at the map here, I don't know how the number of applicants came to be what they are, but just looking at the map, I see that there's no R3 in the area that was handed up to the board. So dropping one parcel for sure in the middle of an area that's R1 and making it R3, I don't think that'd be permissible or reasonable. But if you, if you expand upon that a little bit, and as the chair indicated, it is somewhat subjective, but you do have to have some grouping involved. How large, I don't know. I don't think there's a hard and fast rule or line in the sand, but you can't just drop one R3 in the middle of an R1. So if you make a little island like this, it makes it more reasonable and more fitting with the character of the area.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Joe, what were you saying again, please?
Well, I was just maybe being delusional that I wish there was a way to skin the cat so that the one person could have the legitimate-
I'm not all that sure that Mr. Austin didn't hit on it. You know, maybe we approve everybody's but his. That takes out the majority of the property. We still have, you know, half a dozen properties that are zoned R3, but the bulk of the property's been removed from the potential to put trailers on it.
I don't see why that wouldn't be acceptable. We've got them, they've been presented to us collectively.
Is it all or nothing?
I think it's the applications altogether. Are they individual?
They're individual applications, and Mr. Austin is within his rights to withdraw his application if he wishes to do that.
Okay. I think it was recommended that we vote on them as a cluster, so to speak, but what I'm hearing, there's no reason we can't vote on them independently from one another, from a procedure standpoint. Is that correct?
They made separate applications, my point. Separately voted on. They are separate applications, so I think you need to proceed on that. And also remember, I got to remind you, and I always forget myself, but you need to make a, as part of your motion, indicate whether or not the board feels that the action is consistent with the land use plan and is reasonable and in the public interest.
I wouldn't mind asking Mr. Austin to come back up and, and see if he would want to reconsider his particular.
Well, let me, let me say this, that's fine. Or we, or we could just vote it up or down, his application. I don't know. Does it make any difference procedurally?
I don't think it would. I mean, he's certainly welcome to withdraw his application at any time.
Chairman, if I may personally, I have no reason to deny the request.
I don't either.
The others would be more comfortable if he would draw.
Okay, okay. All right. Seems like that's the pleasure of the board. If you don't mind, come up, Mr. Austin, if you've got something to say related to this. If you don't mind, come up, Mr. Austin, if you've got something to say related to this.
Like I said, we put in this application to help the neighbor out. I have no problem with the way mine is zoned now. I don't have no problem with it changing if it rests the community's feelings on I'm going to put a trailer park for our housing development on this piece of property. That's why I bought this piece of property, to keep that from happening. So I have no problem with withdrawing if it helps out the young man that's wanting to put a trailer there. If it'll help the community be at peace, I have no problem with that. Before is the road, they used a sixty-foot right away around Black Echo Road, has been since I was a kid there. So far as the road, they used to add a road for another trailer. They were when all these other people moved in, and they are now.
Okay.
Can you hang on one minute?
Excuse me.
I'm just going to show Mr. Austin the map. I think that's where the lady indicated.
That's correct. Those two.
I'm going to ask you to mark your two parcels, and then we'll hand that back up to the board.
RDA.
Those are the two parcels, yes.
So he's indicated parcels to the south and to the east, the larger parcels to the north.
Correct. The two largest parcels. We will, seniorly, that's the two largest parcels that'll be withdrawn.
As long as it don't interfere with the young man having enough to get his.
Would it still be spot zoning if we left with what's left?
It's a judgment.
It's a judgment.
Five parcels. That would remain, five parcels would remain, am I correct?
I think that helps the, yeah.
Five remaining parcels would be then be considered.
Five parcels and four owners.
If Mr. Austin decides to withdraw.
As long as it don't interfere with the young man getting his trailer, I don't have a problem withdrawing. It's not going to change what I'm going to do anyway.
Yeah, I'm hearing Mr. Austin withdrawing his application on his parcels.
We were thinking if it's just four more parcels, and what about Mrs. Riddell, since they say she was deceased as of today?
Well, what would you like for us to do in her absence? I don't understand.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you don't think if David were dying.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Austin. Thank you very much.
Mr. Austin.
Okay. Okey-dokey. I guess then what we need to do, Mr. Austin's withdrawn his application. I guess then what we need to do is consider, I guess we could consider the remaining four.
Five.
Well, the four applicants, four applicants is what I'm asking.
My pardon, pardon me.
Yeah, as a cluster now. Is that not correct? Just like we were?
Right.
Do we need, we need to act on each application? Okay, that's what I'm asking. Okay, okay. All right, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that we approve the application of Angela Allen for PIN number nine six eight eight oh three eight seven seven six and then nine six eight eight oh three eight six two five to be rezoned to R three, and I find that this is in accordance with the land use plan.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We have a second. Any further discussions on the application of Angela Allen? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we have the property of Ms. Ula Riddle. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding that piece of property?
Make a motion that we approve the application of Ula Riddle regarding PIN number nine six eight eight oh three seven eight three seven from R one to R three, and find that it is in accordance with the land use plan.
Now you have a second. Thank you, Rod. Any discussion on the application of Ms. Ula Riddle?
Second.
We've got one. Thank you, Les. We've got two now. So anyway, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, regarding the application of Mr. Eddie Bryant.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that we approve the rezoning request of Eddie Bryant, PIN number nine six eight eight oh three five six eight oh, from R one to R three, and find that this is in accordance with the land use plan.
Second. Okay, we have a second. Any discussion on the application of Mr. Eddie Bryant? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. We have one more, the application of Ms. Tanya Ellis.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that we approve the application of Tanya Ellis on PIN number nine six eight five oh three six seven three one from R one to R three, and find that it is in accordance with the land use plan.
Second. We have a second.
Mr. Chairman, I think it was not nine six eight eight, wasn't it?
Excuse me, just a second.
Our work, the question is nine six eight eight oh three six seven three one. He said nine six eight five.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I think.
That's nine six eight here.
Yeah, it says eight.
Which one are you looking at?
The last one. Oh, I was, I'm looking at something else.
I've got nine six eight five. Nine six, we stand corrected, nine six eight eight oh three six seven three one.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You got it? Got it. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much and appreciate your participation in the process today. Thank you. Thank you. I think we found a way to skin a cat, Joe.
I'm glad we were able to do that, so.
Yeah, I think so, too. Glad we were able to slice him.
I am, too.
They did, yeah. The people who were objecting in the letters, that was mostly what they said in the letters.
The next item of business on our agenda is, not right now, if you don't mind. We've got to wrap this meeting up.
The rest of the meeting to go.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to afterwards. Yeah. Okay. The next item on our agenda is three public hearings. The first thing, that for administrative changes to our current ordinance. If you don't mind, Debbie, please explain and read those to us.
First, Gillian's going to pass out some possible statements of consistency for each of these items that we're hearing as well as the language. The administrative changes that we've proposed are to amend the section seventy-eight five eighty-one definitions to include a definition of subdivision that is consistent with that that's in our subdivision ordinance. To delete section seventy-eight five eighty-three and replace it with a section that includes being able to assess civil penalties, and the zoning administrator would have the ability to reduce those civil penalties if someone complies and comes into, cooperates and comes into compliance with the order. To amend section seventy-eight six twenty-three C one regarding hearings, and this requirement is for the Board of Adjustment, if someone appeals a decision to the Board of Adjustment, that that application would be heard at the next regular meeting rather than within thirty-one days as it is stated now, in order for us to have time to do the required notifications. Also to delete section seventy-eight six forty-two footnote five one, single-family residential with public water and sewer. This is, and replace it with a new table. This is part of the Beaver Dam District's regulations. It doesn't change the regulations at all, it just re-formats that table to make it a little bit more understandable. For section seventy-eight six seventy-seven, to amend that to allow the Board of Adjustment orders to be signed and sent immediately following a decision rather than waiting for a meeting and the minutes to be formally approved as it requires now. And that is all of that set of administrative recommendations.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll open up the public hearing process. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to speak to these proposed amendments, which are considered administrative amendments to our current ordinance? Come forward, please, and state your name and spell your last name, if you don't mind.
Linda Ganz, G-A-N-Z.
Ma'am, would you speak into the microphone?
Yes.
I just have a question regarding section seventy-eight five eighty-three D. How long will this one hundred dollar fine continue before the next action is taken?
That's every day until compliance is reached.
And if compliance is not reached, how long?
Then it moves on to the courts for enforcement.
It's infatigable, in a way, I guess, but it does also say, the way I read it, that it could be waived by the zoning administrator.
The goal of the planning staff is always just to have people comply with the ordinance.
Right.
Wouldn't resort to a hundred dollar fine as a first resort ever. I couldn't imagine that.
What I'm saying is, if you have somebody in violation and this is not as motivating as you'd like it to be, when does it, when do you decide to take further action? And if that's clear, then help me.
It's not a stated time limit, it's just whether the violation appears to be in the process of being corrected or not. If you have someone that clearly is not going to comply, then you move on to further steps.
Well, okay, if they have the money to pay a hundred dollar fine for a year at a time, they would continue to violate. So I guess what I'm asking the board is to come up with some limit or also make it more motivating and raise the fine, do something to help get to the next point if there's a violation. And that's all I have to say.
I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
We'll take note of that, and it's a good point. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment regarding the administrative changes proposed? I don't see anyone aboard or any comments, anything we need to discuss?
I think it's important that everyone remember that on all of these hearings, these are proposals to go to the commissioners for final approval, and you can make a comment at that time as well.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
We would, Mr. Chairman, also need a statement of consistency.
From that person making the motion. Thank you.
Please.
We handed up some suggested language.
Yeah. I think everyone's got that. Well, do I have a motion to approve or disapprove?
Joe won't say. Yeah, the motion for statement of consistency should include a description of view as why, if you have any reason, any at all, as to why you feel it's reasonable and in the public interest, but that's, there's some canned language there in front of you, or again, make any reason you want, but you need to find out whether it's consistent with the land use plan and whether you feel it's reasonable and in the public interest.
Okay. Joe, did you want to say something? Maybe I don't mean to call on you, but I thought you were getting ready to say something.
I have to read both of these?
Okay.
Both bullets I have to read?
Yeah, the two bullets at the top, yeah.
The two bullets at the top.
Right.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the proposal based on the following. The proposed amendments regarding the definition of subdivision, penalties for violations, the scheduling of hearings, the clarification of the Beaver Dam zoning district dimensional requirements table for lots with water and sewer, and the generation and signature of orders which indicate the final decision of the Board of Adjustment are necessary to provide remedies within the existing ordinance standards as well as clarification, and as such are consistent with and do not contradict the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan or updates. Further, the proposed amendments to the text are reasonable and in public interest, as said, amendments will provide for better administration of the ordinance.
Okay, we've got a second from Mr. Castle. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the subject of asphalt plants and language that has been advertised.
Publicly.
Recently. So first of all, I'll call on, did you want to pass something out?
Do all the board members have a question?
I get what you're saying it is, I think I have it there.
I've got it. Debbie, if you don't mind, refresh us with regard to language that we're proposing to adopt for permitting asphalt plants in Buncombe County.
These changes are to add asphalt plants as a conditional use in the EMP district and to set conditional use standards that would apply to new asphalt plants in the EMP or in the OU district. We would add to section seventy-eight five eighty-one definitions, a definition for drop-in or short-term childcare center. And the standards that would be set for asphalt plants would be added to section seventy-eight six seventy-eight twelve. And A would require a half-mile setback from certain vulnerable populations, hospitals, hospice, nursing homes, adult care homes, family care homes, childcare centers, and elementary, middle, and high schools, and park and recreation facilities. B would require that the facilities be outside the hundred-year floodplain unless no other location on the lot is feasible, but in no case would the production facilities or storage of hazardous materials be allowed in the hundred-year floodplain. C requires a setback of at least a hundred feet from perennial streams and wetlands. D would require that the facility be served by public water or that it be located at least five hundred feet from any wells. E would require that there be access to a highway so as to minimize travel through residential neighborhoods. F requires that a buffer strip be maintained to minimize visual impact and to maximize noise and particulate matter buffering, and that would be either a strip of a hundred foot with buffer trees and shrubs or a berm topped with trees and shrubs. G would require a security fence around the facility at least six feet high. H would require that the best available systems be used to achieve the greatest air and odor reductions, and that would be reviewed by air quality as part of their permitting requirements. And I requires that the operating hours, signs, and lighting be reviewed with an eye to their impact on the surrounding properties. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll now open this up to public comment. I'll now open this up to public comment regarding the language proposed for asphalt plants in Buncombe County. Do I have anybody who wants to go first? Mr. Justice. Let me say this. I received a letter late Friday afternoon from Mr. Justice's law firm that pointed out a couple of things that I'm sure he's going to elaborate on in his presentation here this morning, in his comment, related to some inconsistencies with what we're proposing versus North Carolina Deener's ordinance that's out there, related to one subject matter and the other of the Buncombe County Flood Management Plan that's in place. Go ahead, and you've got, well, I'll let you do your handout, and we'll start the clock. I got it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address three provisions of this proposed ordinance. First provision I'd like to address is in subsection D dealing with distance from a groundwater intake. The last sentence of that section, even though the first sentence mentions an "or" scenario, the last sentence of subsection D speaks of a 500-foot separation between an asphalt facility and a groundwater intake. I read that to include private wells, public wells, et cetera. What I've handed out to you are state regulations where the state has identified uses of concern and imposed separation requirements. Exhibit A is separation requirements from private wells. And if you scan through what the state has imposed, and you can imagine with Deener that they have actually applied scientific knowledge and background to come up with these standards. And you look down through the list, asphalt plants are not even mentioned as an area of concern for the state of North Carolina. You look down the list, you see things that are of concern. Septic tanks have to be 100 feet from a private well. Animal feedlots have to be 100 feet. Fertilizer, pesticide, herbicide, or other chemical storage areas, 100 feet. Underground storage tank facilities, gas stations, petroleum underground tank farms, in the best-case scenario, simply have to be either 50 or 100 feet. Other sources of groundwater contamination, 50. I'm scratching my head as to the 500 feet for asphalt plants in above-ground facility. Why is that? The state obviously doesn't even list it as an area of concern. As you can see, even underground storage tank facilities only have to be 100 feet. Attached as Exhibit B are standards pertaining to public intake areas. And I just draw attention to this list, as well as asphalt plants are not even mentioned. And even, you'll see for yourself, areas that where chemicals can be applied, and there's a sub-paragraph D, again, 100 feet, even from a public water intake. Mr. Chairman, I believe that having 500 feet has no basis whatsoever in science, or reason, or practicality. Because you will see that a lot of your zoning follows MSD boundaries, which are strips of land along major highways. If you say you have to be 500 feet from a well, there are a lot of people in these areas that are going to be on private wells, and you basically, potentially, are just eliminating good locations in industrial areas in the county where you can put asphalt plants, and you're going to stick it, again, out in the county on a large tract of land around houses, and it's not going to be a good thing. I would encourage you all to greatly reduce this 500 feet to under 100, or 100 or under, because it, once again, it has no basis in reason for why we're at 500 feet for an above-ground facility. In terms of the sub-paragraph B, special flood hazard areas, I am not aware of any use in Buncombe County that has so much focus as an asphalt plant where an office building, if you engineer it and otherwise meet with all of your floodplain requirements, that you couldn't have an office building, unless you showed there was no other feasible location. Or you couldn't put your backhoe. Why is that? You are creating fodder for litigation to put in here, well, you just, well, you can show there's no feasible location, and then the neighbor says, well, you should have leased two acres from your guy instead of one acre. And just, you're just creating fodder for litigation to have this term, no other feasible location. In the end, if they can show they meet floodplain, your flood ordinance requirements, you should be able to have an office building, storage area. I understand not having production facilities or chemical storage in these areas, but for offices, sales offices, equipment, all the other things, parking lots, if you meet the standards of your ordinance, floodplain ordinance, you shouldn't impose higher restrictions just on asphalt plants. Last but not least, the security fencing you have, that you have to put a security fence around everything other than the driveway or entranceway. Why does a sales office have to have a security fence around it? Why does a, where you put your backhoe have to have a security fence? If you're trying to keep people out from the production facility area, or the, where you store things, fine, say that, but don't require someone to have to put a security fence around everything like a sales office, when no one else in the county has to do that, or an office building. And so those are my three areas of concern. I believe in sub-paragraph B, you can eliminate most of the middle part of this paragraph, and I think that would be very reasonable. And I would ask that you change the 500 feet, and just have security fencing around the things that are of concern.
Thanks, sir.
And I'm here for any other questions.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak from the public? Okay, I don't see any, so we'll close the public hearing process. Board, I know you've just gotten Mr. Justice's letter just a second ago, but I think he covered it adequately.
Seems reasonable.
Yeah. Yeah, and Rod, I'm like you. I think, I think what you're saying is, I do have a problem, I think, with us imposing a higher standard than that's already out there, as established, for instance, by Deener, which I'm sure is backed by some scientific data, this type of thing. And the same thing with the Buncombe County Flood Management piece that's already in place. But, anyway.
Tommy, I think I concur. I mean, it's often, so many times we have people come in here, and they're concerned about traffic, et cetera, et cetera, and those are valid concerns, but we defer back to DOT. They're the professionals, we're the zoning issues, and some of this seems like, in light of what he said, zoning by any other means. And I don't think that's our task. I think our task is zoning. So if, you know, if you've got some, clearly some data that's above our knowledge, I think we need to pay attention to it, on both the flooding and the water. That's my comment.
I've got a question for Debbie. If we change the language on this, then does this, whenever we change language during these public hearings, does it have to come back before the public again?
It would.
So, like the towers, we, I think, did we make some changes to that?
Well...
Is that what keeps, why we keep seeing some of these things?
Yes, we need to advertise the exact language that's, that's being voted on.
Well, I think two of the three things that Craig brought forward are inconsistencies with existing laws and our ordinances. The other one has to do with the security fence piece. I don't know how you feel about that. And I'd like to hear from all of you regarding all of it.
I'd like to talk about the 500-foot one. Because I mean, I hear what y'all are saying, but, I mean, I do read here that unless it's a double-lined tank, it's 500 feet in Deener, if I'm reading that right. Is that right? I mean, a double-lane petroleum-fuel underground storage tank is 500 feet.
For public intake.
For public intake?
Yeah, but for a private well, it's only 100 foot.
Okay. And then also, that's fine, and I'm just talking this out, because this is going to be a point of contention with water in this county. It also says, or if I'm reading this right, that they should be able to prove that they can protect it from potential sources of pollution and construct drainage and diversion of the pollution. Is that right? I mean, when they go to get this permit, are they looking at standards Deener has?
Say that again.
Like, in the public wells, water supplies, number one? It says 100 feet, but it also at the end says that they should, supplier of the water be able to protect the well from potential sources of pollution, construct landscape features for drainage and diversion of pollution. I mean, I'm not saying do it or don't, or whatever, I'm just saying I think there's more than just, possibly there could be. Doing what's safe is, is whatever, and obviously, I agree that these are the experts, so...
Well, I believe when they go through the Board of Adjustments, and the variety of approval processes that applicant will have to go through, one of the things they're going to look at, I guess regardless of the location of an existing well to the boundary of the proposed asphalt plant property, is how that asphalt plant operator proposes to protect his neighbors, maybe even beyond what, now, this is just me, maybe beyond what's required by law, but certainly, I'm sure they would take into account, even though a well may be located 105 feet from the closest point of the boundary, I'm sure they're going to take that into consideration, I would think.
Oh, I would think they would. It's just that, you know, if they don't own that property, that well, 100-foot buffer is on, I mean, you know, they're going to have to make, you know, we're going to have to make an ordinance that makes, protects the, protects the well that they don't have control of, potentially. That's all.
Right.
You know, they can't construct something, or, I don't know, I'm not a, going to know all of the scenarios. It's just something to think about. I'm not saying that I'm opposed to 100 feet, I'm just saying, think that out. Because, you know, given the scenarios, where would those water sources be located in proximity? You know, you can't necessarily do that. Or maybe you could, maybe y'all think we could. And as far as the buildings, I mean, only thing I've ever been concerned about is, and I think that Mr. Justice had said about, you know, parking a backhoe there, I get that, but, you know, if it has remnants or particles that are going to be in that flood potential area, they will, you know, ultimately be there on the ground. And, you know, production is definitely what I thought, and I feel, is those areas are sensitive in those floodplain areas. But just think about, you know, all the different things, and however you want to write it, to make sure that those sensitive pieces of equipment that have petroleum products or other toxins on it aren't going to be in the floodwaters. Just because we saw that during the last floods, with the tanks going down the river. I mean, that's what I've heard from the public is most concerning about floodplains, so...
We should also keep some other things in mind. There's nothing to prevent us from making a provision more restrictive than the state or the federal, whatever the case may be. And we know, with all due respect to the state experts, they are not always perfect, and they do flaw. So I don't think we should get hung up on that point. And as I look through the exhibits here, I see 500 feet here for various things, solid waste, and then looking over on Exhibit B, there's more 500 feet, so that's a figure that's used numerous times. And I agree with Michelle, I think our water supply is absolutely critical, and will become more critical in the out years.
Well, I'm going back to what you referenced about the 500 feet. I think in the standard section, the 500 feet is listed once, and it applies to sanitary landfills. In the, whereas, when we get over to the other piece, the public well water supplies, they do talk about several other places, 500 feet from a chemical or petroleum-fuel underground storage tank without secondary containment, that gets back to what you were talking about, a double line, or some type of, you know, prevention system and this kind of thing. Well, I think, you know, we've beat this thing to death, and I'm usually one to move on, but I think we need to get it right, too.
And the fact that the state doesn't include asphalt plants in this, that makes me highly suspect as well.
Well, it cuts both ways. It could mean that it's not worthy of their, they've investigated enough that it's not worthy of further study. I mean, I don't know the answer to that, I'm just throwing that out, Joe. I mean, that's a counter to that argument.
The other thing, too, is, is in a way, it is covered, because, you know, the asphalt is a petroleum product. And for the private wells, all other petroleum or chemical storage tanks, 100 feet. You know, I think that maybe the cleanest way of doing this might be, instead of us giving a distance, just refer back to the chart, and that they have to adhere to the, to the chart. I mean, and...
Refer to Deener's chart.
Yeah, I know that, you know, like, the, you know, the subdivision standards refer, you know, if somebody, somebody that I have to deal with a lot, with, like, road construction, it refers to NC DOT...
Standards specification.
Standards, standards and specifications, and then we have to go look it up, and then it varies for the soil type, what you have to do for your stone basin and asphalt thicknesses, and, so that it's not, you know, one size fits all, you have to fit it to the on-ground conditions, and that might be the, the way to handle this, that, because, you know, this language's been proposed, you know, really for, for one site, but it's also, you know, 40 years from now.
Gone forward.
Yeah, it could be, you know, there could be a lot of different situations that, that may occur, so, you know, and then the state, as Joe said, the state may change some of this, so then it becomes, you know, as their knowledge increases, or, or they, you know, have special cases that come up. That's, that's what, how I would handle that.
That's a good point. If you make that, if they're, if they're the baseline, the reference point, same thing on the flooding piece or whatever, as it changes, then, you know, it just changes.
I concur, I think you're, we're trying to second-guess science that we know is going to evolve if we reference the known science. We're not going to be revisiting this.
Yeah.
As that evolves.
There's been a lot of activity on this subject matter over the last couple of years, and maybe it'd be worthwhile consulting with the state, because sometimes it takes a while to get, for these kinds of things to catch up.
But by referencing the state and their, their codes, then, as it catches up, the ordinance is automatically updated, because you have to do it to that state standard.
Yeah. It, it targets the moving target.
Exactly.
It keeps the moving target in play.
Would that be a hardship for the county to, to have that language in there, that you've got to?
We would need to, to change it and then re-advertise.
Right, well, I understand.
We can't vote on changes today, after we've had a public hearing?
Not unless you have some specific language.
We would have to have, if we change it, do we have to have another public hearing?
Have to have another hearing.
I would think that would be a case...
Right.
I still say it might be worthwhile consulting with the state people and see where they are on asphalt plants. There may be some things going on that we don't know about.
Craig is, if I can ask, is, I mean, this, this was the latest available, when you checked to see with them?
It was.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm just, I know, so I'm assuming if we called them today, until they put it out in data, this is going to be what they tell us.
That is the latest iteration of what their regulations are.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't something...
Well, the most recent date is 1979, on this part that he's given us.
Well, I was...
But it says current on the front, October 1, 2009.
Yeah, yeah.
Haven't done much.
Yeah, they hadn't seen any reason to change it, I guess.
Well, and see, in Section 3 of just this, and I haven't read the whole ordinance, that the department may require greater separation distances for, you know, certain types of facilities, etc. I mean, we don't know what that is. I agree with that. I don't want to stop anybody from, I just, I think it's very difficult for us to write an ordinance for site-specific on this. You know, how many wells, what the wells' locations are, I mean, it's so varied, depending on any site that you see. I personally don't have a problem following the guidelines of Deener, and if we reference that, I think that would be okay with me.
Les, how about you? Hadn't heard anything out of you today.
Well, I frankly think we ought to check with the state, because I know how states operate. And I would guess that they just didn't even think of the asphalt plant on their regulations. That's my thought. I, I think we ought to leave it at 500 feet, to be honest with you. I also oppose... I also oppose the comment on the flood map about, unless no other feasible location exists on the property. I don't like that wording.
I think with that, if we were to take out all but the first and the second sentence, I think it becomes a little bit cleaner in that we're saying that, hey, the facility must comply with Buncombe County Flood Damage and Prevention Ordinance, but in no case shall production facilities or storage of hazardous materials be located in a special flood hazard area.
Keep the first and the last.
Yeah. You know, because I don't, you know, an office building or sales office, to me, isn't-
That's what it is.
That's not going to be a problem. And, and I also don't think that you're going to store, generally, you don't store your backhoe in a non-fenced-in area. I mean, I can't even leave my spare truck at my office without it getting vandalized, and it's on Hendersonville Road, so, you know, I don't think that's going to be-
Well, I like your, I like your proposal on Subparagraph B.
What area of operations be where they drive from this pile to that? I mean, how do you, tell me how you're going to handle that, with the way that you just worded that?
Well, I, I think that, you know, areas of, you know, production facilities and storage of hazardous materials would be, you know, I mean, I don't think that's, you're not going to, you know, I mean, it's all, it's kind of all-inclusive. If you're traveling in between your piles to the production facility, it's not feasible to have it hundreds of yards away and drive through a floodplain.
I mean, it's the logistics, it's the lot. I hear what you're saying, but I mean, it's a lot-
Well, but it's a production area.
But anything pertinent to the production is, and delivery is area of operations, though. I mean, I mean, you've got production, you've got conveyance, you've got storage, you've got all of these factors. We could probably break that down even more definitively. That's all the area of operations, to my way of thinking.
Yeah, the only, I would say delivery isn't, you know, obviously-
Once you leave the property.
Well, or once you, you leave the production facility. I think all this is really doing is pulling the office building out of this, by removing that language.
Well, our council has left us. I assume you'll be back in just a second. Does that leave you in charge, John? Are you going to give us a legal opinion? Now, what I'm getting at is this, is how do we proceed? We've got three things that we've talked about since Mr. Justice's presentation. One has to do with flood, one has to do with the distance from wells, and the other has to do with security fence. Do we take those one at a time, and debate further, and/or decide how we'd like to have that wording, flip it back to the staff, to be re-advertised, or, my question being, how do we proceed? Or how, what's your pleasure? What's the board's pleasure with regard to that?
I think we'll have to deal with them one at a time, you know, and then just, I think it's, I think, I think we've officially decided that we are going to massage this thing some.
Yeah, I think so.
And then re-advertise it. That's the protocol.
Well, let's try to massage it and get it re-advertised, so we can get it out of here sometime, 1st of March, or whatever.
Well, it's, item B, I think, I think Bernie's right. I think if you, if you leave the first and the last, I think all we've done is let them place an office.
Yeah.
And that's at their own risk, you know.
Well, I'm good with that. I don't know, and again, without Mike being here, do we need to vote on this proposed language change?
You're just voting on the recommendation, I would assume.
Yeah, the recommendation.
It would be up to staff to re-edit it and then get it back to us for distribution.
Yes.
But I mean, we don't vote on it until we've had the public hearing.
Yeah, I understand that. But to, to remove this- Yeah, remove this. I mean, we've got, we've got some differing opinions on each one of these items, I believe, up here on the board today. To get past that, how do we do it? Well, we're talking about, Mike, in your absence. We've got three items, of course: fence, sink, security, distance from wells, and the flood issue and so forth. And what I'm hearing on the board, or from the planning board, Mike, is we've got some differing opinion here, and this type of, how do we proceed? I think John's maybe filling in, too, with that. I realize we'd have to go back out and re-advertise, go through the public hearing process, if we modify this language that's been given us today. But it sounds like we want to do that, is what I'm hearing from the board. How do we go about doing that?
I think the cleanest thing to do, at this point, since we have some different sort of opinion as to what to do with the particular language in each section, is to send it back to staff and come back to you guys in a couple of weeks to see what we can do to tinker with it, and head back down the road toward another public hearing.
Okay.
I have thought, it seems to me, some of this is, if, for example, a majority of you, upon being polled, said, I agree with Bernie's suggestion of accepting the first sentence and the last sentence in B, and a majority of you through polling say, this is the direction we want to go, staff, will you address that the way we've directed you? In D, if you want to tie it to state standards, I think if you just left in the first sentence, and then say, in all cases, the applicant should show evidence of compliance with state regulations pertaining to separation from wells. And if a majority agreed with that, and you give direction, then they at least know what your direction is. And then, the third thing is, where do you want the fence? I, I just said, if you just require somebody, we may, he may do it voluntarily, if you simply, as a requirement, say you've got to have the production facilities, storage areas fenced. If a majority of you agree, then that's the direction, so.
Okay, good idea. All right, let's go to the item, Subparagraph B. Bernie's already presented the language that he proposes to us. Let's, if you don't mind, I'll start with you, Greg, and see how you feel about that, and we'll, we'll poll the board.
I'm, I'm for it. I'm for his suggestion to strike, to leave the first sentence, leave the last sentence, and strike what's in between.
Okay. Les?
I think I missed the previous discussion as far as this 500 feet is concerned. Where did that come from?
Unless, we're talking, right now, we're talking about just the Subparagraph B, which is the flood piece.
Oh, okay. I, I agree with that.
The flood piece only. We'll go back on the other in just a second.
Elimination of the-
Okay.
Between sentences. He agrees with it.
He agrees with it, too. Michelle?
Um, I, I'm trying to recall, actually, why we had this discussion before, and we actually came to, let's go ahead and get, exclude the parking driveways and entryways out of this. And I'm, and, you know, this is obviously very quick, so I'm going to, I'm just going to sit here for a second. I, I don't, I want to make sure that the, the wording is, is how I feel okay about it. I mean, just pulling me real fast, and I understand, that's part of the job here, is to read quickly and make decisions. But we had an intensive conversation about this before we had public, a public announcement, and, and everyone agreed at that point, only to exclude the parking driveways and entryways, so I just need a second.
Okay.
And I think whatever I feel like on this would apply to the fencing, because that's, that, I think having it over the whole area, that is a little ridiculous. But that's, that was, I thought, the sense of what we wanted to do, anyway, so.
Okay. Scott?
I'm in agreement with removal of this intersection.
Okay. And I'm in agreement with Bernie. Bernie, I assume you're in agreement?
You haven't rethought, have you?
I'm in agreement with Bernie's recommendation.
Okay. Joe?
I might be. If we could do something with the last sentence, which would become the second sentence. I just feel it needs to be flushed out a little bit. I also think we need to, and I'll come back to this, but I also think we need to keep in mind when we consider the state regulations, and where these people are who write these regulations. They're in flatland. And we're in a unique situation here. Mountains, valleys, streams, watersheds that are, that are different, and, and so when we have a flood here, it's a totally different beast than it is when we have it in the Piedmont and the coastal plain. Having said that, I'd like to know what the definition of, going back to the last sentence, what the definition of production facilities is. Does that include conveyance on the property? Because that's where the fugitive, that's where a major part of the fugitive pollution comes from. When we say the storage of hazardous materials, does that mean asphalt?
Okay.
I mean, we don't say that.
Okay.
And so, I just would like to see, and if the staff is going to be asked to come back with some wording, I would like to see the last sentence a little bit more definitive, and then maybe I can go along with Bernie's suggestion.
Okay. Rod, how about you?
I agree with Bernie's recommendation.
Okay. So what I've got, I've got seven of us that don't have any reservations regarding Bernie's proposed language. And so what I would suggest that you do, recommend that you do, ask you to do, is if you would, adjust the language accordingly. Now, deference to Joe, if there's any, if anyone has any thoughts regarding definition of production facilities, that would like to, if we want to get a little more definitive, if it beats with the board's approval, I would like to have the authority with Bernie to meet with staff to discuss that, so that when we, when you receive electronically the revised proposed language, it's clean enough that we move forward at the next meeting to, well, I say next meeting, after it's advertised, to hold another public hearing. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. All right, that appears to take care of the proposed language in Subparagraph B. I know. I've been, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Been thinking about you. Okay, Subparagraph D, that has to do with the distance from wells. Would you, would you do the pleasure of crafting the language again? I think you kind of had it, anyway.
Well, it, you know, we could change that last sentence to, in all cases, facility shall be no less, or, or, the facility shall adhere to the state well con, let's see, the, how would you work that? In all cases, the facility shall be no less than the distance, the distance from groundwater intake as measured from the outer edge area of operations to the recommended well construction standards in the North Carolina Administrative Code, Subchapter 2C, Section .0100, something along that lines.
Well, let me see if I can shorten it just a little bit, maybe. What about, what about something like, the facility shall be compliant with North Carolina Department of Environmental, Environment and Natural Resources Division of Water Quality, Subchapter, Subchapter 2C, Section .0100, entitled Well Construction Standards. That's the article, I believe.
I think if you, just so, for black and white purposes, so that the Board of Adjustment is then not going through and struggling to see if, well, are they an underground storage, to see which one under this list it fits, if you require the applicant to show proof of compliance with these standards, what more than likely will happen is, they will appear at the Board of Adjustment with the site plan, and have some letter from the state that says, yes, this facility has shown the site plan's compliance. And so, Tom, what I'm suggesting is, if you, if the Senate's just simply said, in all cases, the applicant shall show compliance with the standards you just said, it's maybe, it's slightly different than what you said, but I think-
A little bit.
It, it allows the applicant to simply appear and bring, like, a letter from the state, or something to show compliance, so.
Okay. For polling purposes, let me kind of phrase it this way. What we're, what we're talking about, I think, is, again, we talked about the moving target, and that is the standards that may change as time goes on. For the purposes of polling, see where we head from here, then we'll throw it back to staff to create the correct language. I would ask, are you in agreement with changing the language that is consistent with the standards required by the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources Water Quality subsection?
I am.
Greg is. Les?
I'm still thinking. I, I hate to change it with the 500 feet, because I don't think the state really considered asphalt plants in their, in their regulation. But again, it would appear from Mr. Justice that we might be facing litigate, litigation if we don't go along with the state. So I'll go along with it.
I would mind it, and I think that referring back to something is good. However, I, I think, before I would be willing to agree to this, that I would want to know specifically what I'm reading here. And, and I don't want to pull the state in, again, because I know that this process has been lengthy, but I don't see asphalt plants in here. So I don't really know what standards I'm, you know, I mean, I, I just really don't think I know that this reference is actually applying to what we're talking about, I'm sure, whatever.
I would, I would think, while it doesn't specifically say asphalt plants, it does say all other petroleum or chemical storage tank systems.
But that's, that's, that's just one part of it, though, Greg. It, it, there's a whole lot more to these entire facilities, and the storage tank, that doesn't qualify for the other aspects of it. I see your point, but-
And the only other, only reason I'm saying that is, it says, requires graders, it may, you know, for other facilities. Like, there's some other facilities out there that aren't specifically named here, and, and maybe it's 50 feet, is all they say, for the asphalt plant. I don't know. I don't know the answer to that enough to say that I could agree if that came up.
Okay.
But I like the, I like the direction of that.
Okay, okay. I'll give that a half of the point.
Thanks.
Excuse me. Let, let me finish. Go ahead, Scott.
I would be in favor of that.
Scott's in favor of it. I'm in favor of it.
Bernie?
Bernie's in favor of it.
Josh?
Okay.
Joe?
It depends.
Hang on. That's a half.
It depends. If I remember right, if I remember right, it was the Environmental Advisory Board that proposed this 500 feet. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
I think you're right, Joe.
They looked at the, the listing and said a lot of things are 500 feet, so let's-
I wondered if it'd be, and maybe it would be worth the time, to ask them where they got this figure. Do they have some science behind it, or is it just an arbitrary figure?
Well, they, they looked at this, this list, and said there are lots of uses that are recommended for 500 feet, and this is a use that we, we find some, some issues to exist with, so let's pick 500 feet.
This room is probably, what, 50 feet long?
Oh.
Maybe, close?
It's long, it's longer than that.
Longer than that, so 100 feet would be not quite two times that. And I'm not the scientist, but I'm just trying to get everybody to visualize what 100 feet would be versus 500 feet, and I, I don't feel comfortable with less than 500 feet, based on what Mr. Justice gave us.
Okay.
And based on what I know and learned about the production of asphalt.
Okay. Rod?
I agree with state standard.
Okay. All right, I've got six of us that are apparently not in doubt. So I'd ask you, Debbie, if you don't mind, please to create, we'll go through the same scenario, recreate the language, work it out for Bernie and I to meet with you in the very near future, and, and with the goal being getting this out for public notice soon. I want to wrap it up.
What did we decide about the fence?
We hadn't got there. I was going to do it next. Yeah. And the last item that was brought in contention was our requirement to have a security fence around the entire premise, basically around the-
around the entire premise, basically around the, with the exception of the driveway or entrance ways onto the premises, has to do with the entire facility, fencing the
What if we just changed area of operations to production area?
Or we could, we could exclude the office building, too.
We do need to be standardized, because in this paragraph G, we're, we're calling them operational areas, and over here, we call them production.
Production.
Mm-hmm. So we need to get the definitions down.
Got you.
The terms of reference need to be clear, crystal clear, for the Board of Adjustment, because they're not going to be spending the time that we've spent on this, and we don't know everything. We really need to pin it down.
What, what came-
Excuse me, just a minute. Say that again, Scott, if you don't mind.
Security fence shall surround the entire production area, excluding driveways. I don't even know, at that point, I don't even know that you have to deal with the driveways because of the production area.
Yeah, that's true. You wouldn't have to address the driveways. Okay, that's a good starting point. Greg, I'll start with you again.
I thought I had a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
I apologize.
Where did the gated come from? Is that also an advisory board recommendation? The whole, I mean, where did that even come from? I mean, is that just a standard to have it gated, and, and that's just for safety reasons? I mean, who started that? Was that the staff it came from, or?
And Tommy, not that they'd like to tell me specifically what I'm supporting here.
Okay.
I mean, I didn't hear the latest.
Scott, Scott has basically suggested that we recreate language that requires security fencing around the production, and, and Joe brought up a good point, we've got to get consistent, are we going to use operational, or are we going to use production areas? But production slash operational areas, the security fencing would be required only for that area, no other areas. In other words, your sales area could be located out of it, actually. You know, obviously, your driveways can.
No, absolutely not support that.
Okay. Les, how about you?
Yeah, I'd support the wording of just the operational area.
Thank you. Michelle?
What do we do on concrete right now? What's the requirement? Concrete plants? There are no gating requirements? There's no gating requirements at all for those, that you remember? Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem, I just, my only wondering is why they wanted the driveways in the specific, where we pulled that from seemed to be pulled out. Why? Is there some kind of hazard there? But I, I don't see a problem with consistency with B. The same area is affecting B affecting G.
Scott?
I agree with him.
He's in agreement. I'm in agreement.
Yeah. I'm in agreement.
First agreement. Josh?
I don't think you need to gate the office and, and places like that, but the production slash operation area.
Yeah, I agree. And I think they will, really, for their own security reasons, you know? Rod?
Yeah.
You okay with it? Okay. Looks like we're substantially in agreement with the change to that language as well, so if you would, please address that, too, and we'll handle it accordingly. Okay, I'll, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing process related asphalt plants until the next time. Hopefully, the last time. And we'll move on to the proposed language for vacation rental homes, rooming houses, and we'll move into the public after staff makes their proposal, reads the language,
And a new definition for rooming house. Vacation rental being no more than two single-family homes with a combined total of no more than 9,000 square feet, and a vacation rental complex, which is one or two homes with a combined total of more than 9,000 square feet, or a group of more than two separate units. And also to have, establish standards, Section 78, 678, for the conditional use, Number 13, vacation rental complex, or rooming house, vacation rental complex, and rooming house A being adequate access to a highway or suitable road, B being maintaining at least a 20-foot separation between buildings, C ensuring adequate access to each unit in order to be accessed by emergency vehicles, D having an approved water sewer system, E supplying at least one parking space for each two guest rooms, and that parking to be screened from adjacent single-family development, F limitation to one sign, no more than 10 square feet, G a bathroom shall be required for every four guest rooms, and H lighting that's harmonious with the surrounding properties. Also, to revise Section 78, 641 permitted use table, to strike the current line that shows vacation houses and rentals, and to add vacation rentals as a permitted use in every district. Vacation rental complexes as a conditional use in R3 NS, CS, EMP, PS, Beaver Dam and open use, and rooming house as a conditional use in R2 and EMP, and permitted use in R3 NS, CS, PS, and OU. To amend the steep slope, high elevation overlay district permitted use table, Section 78, 645, to make vacation rentals a permitted use in every district, and vacation rental complexes less than 11 units, conditional in R3 NS, CS, EMP, PS, Beaver Dam and open use, and then to amend the protected ridge overlay permitted use table, Section 78, 646, to allow vacation rentals as a permitted use in every district. That's all.
All right. Is there anybody from the, we'll open the public hearing part of it. Is there anybody from the public that would wish to comment on this?
Al Gompert of Buncombe County. Once again, I think that this is misguided to drop business operations, rentals by the day, by the week, in residential neighborhoods. I think, at the very least, it should be a conditional use, where there's summary view, as, as you have it as a permitted use, nobody looks at, is there sufficient off-street parking? Nobody looks at the safety issue? Is this an older home that doesn't meet code? Are there smoke alarms? You certainly wouldn't permit a business to, to operate without some regulation, yet you're dropping this into residential areas, and it's, it's sure to cause problems. I think that, as I say, at the very least, it should be conditional. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else that'd like to say something?
Hi, my name is Liz Wiederhold, and I'm a Realtor and a long-term property, vacation rental property owner, and a short-term, a long-term rental owner, year-round annual rental owner. So I own properties that go sort of in all directions. As a Realtor, obviously, I wouldn't oppose anything that was beneficial to our community, and I wouldn't support anything that's, that's negative to our community, because the, the neighborhoods of Buncombe County are how I make a living. So I support this change, because I really think it's a win-win for all. I don't see the negatives. I think that anyone, anybody who opposes this has probably not lived next door to one of the vacation rentals, of which there are probably more than 1,500 in Buncombe County, because it is by far a much better choice than a long-term rental. I know long-term rental owners really try to maintain their properties well, I'm sure most of them do, however, for those of us who own vacation rentals, they are always on the market. Curb appeal to us is critical at all times, so we're always hands-on, always eyes-on to those properties. They are subject, it's a good question, are they subject to anything? They are rental properties, and so they're subject to vacation rental ordinances, and also are subject to the landlord ordinances, which do require that you maintain smoke alarms, CO2 alarms, et cetera. One of the key things, I think, from the county's perspective, is that the people who rent vacation homes are our tourists, and therefore, they're the basis of our, of our economy at this point. They bring billions into our community. Our vacation renters here are older folks, for the most part, they're retirees, they want to bring their whole family together, or they're couples trying to get away. We don't have the vacation rental community of the party people that, you know, try to slip into the coast, and most of us, as vacation rental owners, highly restrict who comes into our properties. They're very valuable, they're very expensive, they're fully furnished, and so therefore, we protect them. My husband and I, as I said, own two vacation rentals in the county. They're directly adjacent to our home, I can look out my window at one of the cabins, and sometimes I have to, because I don't even know if my guests are there. That's how quiet, that's how respectful they are. They've paid a lot of money to come here, and they take that money, then, and go out, leave our home during the day, and they head out into Biltmore State or wherever, and enjoy tourist activities, and spend billions in our community. I've never had a problem with a guest in a vacation rental, and I only wish I could tell you that about my long-term rentals. Just simply not the case. A quick internet search, I found 1,500 vacation rental listings, and I would guess that maybe half of those are currently in violation of this ordinance and don't know it, that are, that are somewhere in the county in an R1 or an R2 district. Most of us who chose to live in the county moved out of the city by conscious choice. We haul our own garbage, we maintain our own wells and care for our own septic systems in exchange for the ability to not have these restrictive deed restrictions and, and control over our property. Thank you.
All right. I've got one quick question for you. When you mentioned that you, you have these landlord statutes that you have, and rental statutes, now, I would assume those are from the state?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Since you've spoken before, we want to have you spell your name. But please state it again.
My name is Linda Gans, and, do I have a limit of three minutes? Even though it's a public hearing? Okay, I'm going to speak as fast as I can. If I don't get through this, I'm going to ask if somebody else would read for three minutes the rest of it. So my name is Linda Gans, and I live in a small subdivision in Fairview, in Zone RLV. I'm here to talk to you about not permitting vacation rentals in all zones across the board. I'm representing a small group of homeowners who live in a beautiful wooded subdivision with 10 acre lots still to be sold, and we are living with this nightmare right now. I think you have mostly heard from the businesses and homeowners who are running vacation rentals, or lawyers representing them, because they are the ones lobbying you to change the zoning to include all zones. Of course, they want it, they profit from it. The communities, basically, right now are in the dark. I, I just found this out, I stumbled upon it, because I was searching for some help, and I found out about it on Friday, so. The negative impacts on all of the single-family residential communities will be great if you allow homeowners to rent out their homes daily, or weekly, or even monthly. There are plenty of lovely places for vacationist tourists and transients to stay, and tourism is not going to be hurt by protecting the citizens of Buncombe County. There are zones that do allow vacation rentals, if you know. In our community, a homeowner intentionally built a $2 million home to use it as a business for profit. And let me tell you the ways that it has negatively impacted us, and will continue to impact us. Issues that we are faced with now, and others that we'll continue to be faced with, include property values will go down, it will be more difficult to sell my house if families with children, pets, and the retired and elderly know that strangers are coming and going. Other issues include strangers having access to a gate code, strangers wandering onto our private property, this has happened to us, guns possibly being brought onto the premises to hunt for wildlife, or just for recreation, putting neighbors and their pets in jeopardy. Who's watching over them? We are not given info about these strangers, and have no say in who is renting, leaving us in the dark, and leaving us vulnerable to all kinds of unsafe possibilities. If pets are allowed, they could wander onto other property, cause damage or harm to neighbors' pets. Fire in the woods is always a concern, and homeowners are very cautious, while strangers may be less concerned. Neighbors get to know who is driving by.
We appreciate it.
I haven't even, I would really appreciate it if you would consider giving me three more minutes.
No, I, I mean, I think-
I have not really heard from the other side. I have watched since November, and I know that there's only been one gentleman here speaking for us.
What you could do is, you could-
I could ask somebody to read this for me.
Well, you could do that, or you could submit, you could submit this in writing, and they, they would-
Mr. Chairman, in our bylaws, it does give us the provision, if the board, majority of the board allows five, five minutes, we have that prerogative to do, to do that. But it would have to be up to the majority of the board.
What's the board's pleasure on this? I mean, I think we've had a lot of people speaking today, and we've limited everybody else to three minutes, so I don't know, what, do you want to make an exception on this?
I think it's fair.
So we had a couple people that said yes. Or no? No. Okay, I'm sorry.
I have one question, though.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, ask her a question.
Yeah.
Do you have any neighborhood restrictions in your neighborhood, covenants, that would, would speak to vacation rentals for your neighborhood?
I was going to address that further on.
Yeah, I just wondered if your neighborhood does.
I actually have, this is a new community, it's a very small community, we have developer bylaws and covenants, and they don't come close to being able to enforce this violation right now.
Right. I just, I, you know, I want to make sure that for your neighborhood, and for anyone in Buncombe County, if neighbors get together in communities, they can create neighborhood associations, which can limit things like, for instance, vacation rentals, and follow through, there's processes to make that happen, if, if someone's violating that, and that would be a group effort, so. Regardless of what happens, I just want to, you know, throw that out there, and, and let you know that there's some other things that, you know, that would be another layer of protection, so.
We are very aware of this. We have, basically, right now, we have to face a very costly legal step, that would be tens of thousands of dollars, and-
Well, I hear your comments, though, and I, and I understand, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
We know that, and it takes a 90% of- We know that, and it takes a 90% approval in our community. So that would be really difficult.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment on this? All right, hearing none. I'll close the public portion of this hearing and open it up for discussion with the board. I mean, I think Michelle's made a good point that, you know, there are subdivisions that restrict that. And most subdivisions do have, you know, do have ordinances in place.
If I may add to that, it has to be a private subdivision before you'll have restrictive covenants, if any. I realize I'll be in the minority, the vast minority, to oppose this. But I think it's a terrible thing to do. And I think once residents across the community find out what's really happening, that the wool has been pulled over their eyes, that this has been an issue that's been brought forth, and the public doesn't know about it. And all of a sudden, one day, they're going to wake up, and they're going to find out. And our community is, has numerous private subdivisions. And this, I think, strikes deep into what these residents think they have. And I'm very familiar with many restrictive covenants of different private subdivisions. And they don't prevent this type of rental activity. They don't even address it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Vice Chairman.
Is there anybody else?
I mean, I think that, I would like to say that I can, I can anticipate maybe some issues with this. But our zoning, you know, we do the best we can for the most amount of people. And I mean, you know, there's the other side, too, that wants to be able to do that and would have no problem. So, you know, branding together and creating rules for your community or your individual subdivision can further restrict it, so.
Yeah, and I'm someone who has, on many occasions, gone into an area and rented a house. And, you know, took my family, it was, you know, it was a really nice way to, especially, you know, going over to Europe or something, to kind of immerse yourself in the culture or in the local area. And, you know, I think that the point, that the type of people that typically rent these houses, you know, are usually families or older individuals that, you know, are coming into the area. So that's what I have to say. No, I'm sorry, the public portion is closed. So what's the board's pleasure? Do I hear a motion? More discussion?
And if I could just remind the board, you're also, depending on which way you're going, on your motion, you want to state in your motion whether or not you feel it's consistent with the land use plan and reasonable in the public interest.
I'm sure that we accept the staff's recommendation in the wording and in compliance with the comprehensive land use plan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
How many show of hands on that?
Okay. So that closes the public hearing portion of it. Item six, discussion of public safety towers.
We emailed this amended wording out, but just wanted to make sure everyone saw it and agreed with it before we proceeded to advertise it.
Debbie, do we need a motion on this?
Is this going to come back for public hearing?
It will come back for public hearing.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody was in agreement with it before we advertised, if anyone has any issue.
Nothing's changed since yours, your email version.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That has to be advertised for how long?
It has to be advertised at least 10 days before the meeting.
Okay, so to understand, as long as you're asking us, the blue wording, "No building permit shall be issued for a period of 30 days after sending the notice, unless written statements are received from all parties required to be notified, indicating that they have no objection to the facility."
Yes, that's the way it is.
People who have no objection must write in.
If you don't, if, to waive the 30-day waiting period. We, if we wanted to build a tower, didn't want to wait the 30 days, we could get letters from all the people notified, that were required to be notified, saying that they had no objection.
Yeah, I would suggest you say waiving the 30-day period.
This is the language that was in the cell tower ordinance. I just took it out of there.
It is, the exact language.
Yes.
Interesting.
I think it's important to keep consistency, you know, with the cellphone language. I like the way it's worded. I mean, just unless we're going to change the other ordinance, which I don't think we really want to go through that process right now. This isn't something we need to vote on, is it?
No, I just wanted to get a sense that it was what you were looking for.
All right, well. So when would we take this up again? First meeting in March?
Probably, I'm not sure exactly whether we could make the next meeting or not.
All right, well, moving on to number seven, since we're kind of, I believe we're on time. Does anybody from the public got any further comment? Dee Dee, come on up.
What I actually have is a question. When you were just discussing the requirement, if they, if you want to build a tower sooner than 30 days, you have to have a letter from all the people who had to be notified, saying that they don't have, are they not opposed to it? Does that also include the, is that notification going to include the landowners whose property is actually not adjacent to the tower, but is adjacent to the road that would be required to access the tower?
Well, I think there's a distance in there also. It was about 500 feet. So if you lie outside the 500 feet and you're not an adjacent property owner, you would not be notified.
So that, but maybe if this tower's at the top of the mountain, and you live kind of down lower, and they're going to have to go across, you know, by your property or on the property next to you to build a road to access the tower, you would not be notified. Is that what you're telling me?
That's right. It's within 500 feet of the tower itself.
So most of those towers are going to be on high places that are going to require roads that are a lot, start a lot farther away than 500 feet? And you're not going to notify the people whose property is going to be crossed by the, or adjacent to the road? Is that correct?
That's a possibility.
If it was a public street, I'm sure not. If they were coming across private property, sure.
Sure, they'd have to give a right-of-way. But if they're on your neighbor's property, and that road is going to drain into the stream that's on your property, I mean, I live in a place like that where the road they built drains mud into my pond. And, but it's not, the road doesn't cross my property. But I get the mud.
I can relate to that.
So, so I would like to see it include the property owners whose property also is within 500 feet of the road that's going to access the tower. Because when they build a thing, they're going to have to have a bigger road to haul all the equipment up there, to build the thing. Then they just could have a little dinky road to go up there to service it. But in the me, and so they're going to have that big temporary road with the bulldozers and all that stuff, when, that's when the mud really starts to come. So I would like to see it include some form of a notification for the people whose property is near the access road, as well as the tower. I can think the tower's a lot less problem to your property than that road.
I think she's got a point.
I'm not really sure how we would define that. I mean, I-
Just add it in.
Well.
Yeah, but you'd have to cut that off at some point. I mean, at some point, this thing's going to be traveling across, you know, I don't want to say-
One of the things that we're trying to do with some of these ordinances is we're trying to keep the language, you know, inconsistent with related ordinances. You know, I-
And, you know, it's, I think, keep in mind, they have to comply with all other ordinance on the books.
Right, including erosion control.
Exactly. And they're not, they're not going to try to go out of their way to pick a site that's going to be difficult to develop. I mean, they go out of their way to find a site that already has good access. And not just a cart path or something like that up to it, because they want to minimize that expense.
Well, and just specific to the road, depending on the site, you're not really sure where you're going to put the road in. I mean, you're not getting plans on a road. I mean, you could put it in different ways. I'm not sure there's any way you can even know who that would, 500 people feet would be, depending on which path is best to build the road. And I feel confident the ordinance is backed up.
I mean, again, that's the majority of the time, the roads are going to be there.
Well, or it would be.
I mean, we're just really talking about the path that would be improved.
All right, is there any other public comment? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. This meeting is adjourned.